All right, let's get started. Russ, will you call the meeting order, please?
Joe Becker here, Peter Bliss and Black here, Scott Kirkland.
Here.
Lisa Dean.
Here.
Dame Pembel.
Here.
Russell Loff here, Cassie Waits.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
All right. I would like a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. I would like a motion to approve the minutes of the May 22nd, 2019 regular board meeting, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I would like a motion to approve the bills payable, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Like paying the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to our good news.
Dean?
Dean.
Come on up.
Good evening, Superintendent. Kim Collins and the school board members. My purpose this evening is to give you a brief overview of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and the collaboration with the school district. But first, some special thanks to Drew Cooper, Jody Gibb, Justin Hahn, Megan Latch, and many others. The mission of the Hastings Beyond the Yellow Ribbon is to synchronize community services, honor all veterans of all ages and age, and finally, self-identification of military relationships. Within the school district, it is the military support group that provides service, support, and recognition. Children also serve and make a great sacrifice. Now to change the topic of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and focus on what the veteran service organizations and community offer our students and children. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, a kickoff and end-of-the-year pizza party for the military support group in collaboration with the community. Steadfast support by the career counselors in the Minnesota National Guard Family Child Youth Program. Their mission is to positive impact soldier and family readiness, resiliency, and retention by providing secure, timely, flexible, and high-quality youth development opportunities and resources which promote the overall well-being of the military, child, and youth. Laura Russell, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Post 1210. Sponsor, support of the community programs. Examples are Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Voice of Democracy, and the Patriot Pin Contest with the 2019-2020 patriotic theme, "What Makes America Great." The high school Voice Democracy Program awards from the community, district, and department at all expense paid to Washington C. and a $30,000 scholarship. The Patriot Pin for middle school students offer a top prize of a $5,000 scholarship along with rewards at post, district, and department. It has a deadline of 31 October, but I encourage them to start today because when they get into school, they're going to be busy, busy, busy. Other programs include Americanism and citizenship, Community Halloween Party, All-Night Graduation Party, Safety and Child Abduction Programs in collaboration with Jacob Wetherling Resource Center and Minnesota Public Safety Amber Alert. Generous scholarships were given to five students and programs offered by United Way and so much more. Nelson Lucking, American Legion, Post 47. In 1919, the American Legion was founded on four pillars: Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and the Youth. Each of these pillars encompass a variety of programs that benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, and the youth of America and the ordinary citizen. Examples are the Oratorical Contest, which exists to develop a deeper knowledge and appreciation for the United States Constitution among high school students. Since 1938, the program has presented participants with academic speaking challenges that teaches important leadership qualities, the history of our nation's laws, the ability to think and speak clearly, and understanding of the duties, responsibilities, rights, and privileges of American citizens. They support Boys State, Girls State, Little Children in White, and many other programs. The United Way of Hastings. During the Awards Night, they recognized the Boys State and the senior boy and girl. The Eagles Ares offered 10 seniors with a Scholastic Scholarship. If there are any teachers or employees eligible to join us, please send them our way. The VFW membership meeting is on the second Tuesday, 7:30. Auxiliary, the first Tuesday, 7:00 P.M. It opens on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 11:00 to 2:00. And the American Legion is open every day to enjoy some hospitality with memberships at 7:00 every Fourth Monday. At the High School Pizza Social on May 30th, 11:30, it was good to visit with the students which have connections to the military. You know that I talk too much, but they eat so much that I thought they had a bottomless stomach. I understand that the school policy for food is going to be changed next year. No food can be brought in, but we'll find a way to still honor them. I started a new program that's similar to new library. I want to set an example to our children, especially the elementary and below, by sitting with them and reading a book or talking about citizenship. One book that is on my reading level is F is for the Flag. This is very similar to the Dolly Pardon Imagination Library sponsored by the United Way of Hastings. Or let them just come to my home library at 436 Tiffany Drive, just east of the Hastings Fort. Do you have any questions? Thank you for allowing me to present what the students and children impact is in Hastings School District. We're looking forward to be a partner with you in the development of our community's children for God and Country. No one does more for our veterans and people helping people. Thank you.
Dean, how long have you been doing this?
Huh?
How long have you been doing this?
Unfortunately, about 10 years.
And this year, I'm going to retire. Okay.
And I think we've found some very qualified people to take my position and carry on the mission.
On behalf of our students and community, thank you so much for what you've brought to those students and families. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ellen, come on up.
My name's Mary Ellen Fox, and I am the Health Services Coordinator for the Hastings School District, which basically means I'm like the head nurse. So I'm in charge of the health services that are in the school district. We have nurses in each of the buildings, and they work very hard to make sure our students are well taken care of during the day and that any health conditions they might have are not barriers to their learning. As you know, there's a real strong connection between health and how you do in school. If you're feeling well, you can do well, and if you're not, it's not so easy. So I just, on behalf of all the nurses, thank you for your support, School District. We really, our kids' health is really important, and so we appreciate your support of the health services that we have. The purpose for me being here today is because I am Chair of the Smart Choices Wellness Committee, and that is a student wellness committee. And in 2015, the school board passed an updated student wellness policy, and one of the requirements was that there's an annual report to the school board. So this is the report. And so we've done this several different ways, and sorry, I'm just going to write here, this is all on the website, so you can go to the Smart Choices website, which is part of the school district website. Best way to go there is to go through the food service website, right at the bottom, left side, it says Smart Choices, then you can find it there. So anyway, this year, the Smart Choices Committee met three times. We were supposed to meet four, but there was a whole lot of snowstorms. We actually rescheduled twice, and it just didn't happen. So anyway, we met three times. This year, we had newsletters that were sent out to all parents monthly, starting about in December, and just really highlighting some health concerns that we wanted to bring to parents' attention. So there's a listing of some of the topics that we covered. Then we also, in order to do this report, we surveyed students. And we surveyed 371 elementary students, third and fourth graders, and we surveyed 798 middle school students and asked them various questions, and they were similar to last year's questions. And so I'm just going to click on the elementary link right here. And so the students were asked what physical activity you get besides gym and recess, and they had a lot of choices. We kind of left it open-ended. We also asked, how many fruits and vegetables did you eat? The caveat with this is, did you eat one grape? Do you count that as serving? I don't know. So anyway, we really, this is sort of a nebulous question to ask, but we asked the same question last year, so we kept it the same. I think it looks like we could do a little bit better on eating fruits and vegetables. And then, how safe do you feel in school? Part of the reason why we asked this is, health is not just, do you exercise every day? Do you eat right? But it's also, do you have a sense of belonging? And if you feel safe at school, then you probably could feel like you have a sense of belonging, but if you don't feel safe at school, that's going to be difficult to have. So actually, generally speaking, most of the kids feel pretty safe. And there were all sorts of comments. I'm not going to go through all these comments or anything, but I just want to tell you those, so you can look at them at your own pace. Middle school students, we asked similar questions and more questions. And I don't know if you can, let's see if I can get this out of here. So healthy food, yes, they feel like they pretty much have opportunities to eat healthy food at the middle school. They have a lot of activities, opportunities for physically, to be physically active. Their healthy coping skills to manage stress, maybe not quite as strong. And this is one our committee really is big on, is about social media and the effects of that. We asked the same question last year. I think it's about the same as last year. And I feel safe at school. Again, most students feel pretty safe. That's about 70% of the students agree or strongly agree that they feel safe at school, but there's still kids that don't. And then, last year, we asked this question because we're all concerned about cell phone use, and so we asked, how often are kids on their cell phones, about their stress? And then there's some interesting comments. These are my highlights. I did not do any spell check or any corrections, so just know that there's all sorts of interesting spellings in there. But, so anyway, those are some of the comments that kids made about safety. All right, so I'm going to go back now. And then, so another survey we did three years ago is called the SHI, S-H-I, and it's the School Health Index. And this is actually a very comprehensive survey that various people in this, at each school do. And there's 11 modules, and it's quite intense. And whoever is answering the question is the one that gets to decide what they think the correct answer is. So the interesting thing is that, let's see if I can get this to go right. So the purpose, it's a national thing, and we will be able to get grant funding because we've done this again. So that was the reason why we decided to go ahead and do this survey. So the team members were asked to complete the questions, and then we tallied the results from each of the sites. This is the high school results. So you really want to be in the green. Notice there's one in the red, and it's community involvement. That's for the high school. Hastings Middle School, nothing in the red for the middle school. Yellow and green. Kennedy, we have health education way in the red. And this has been one of my things that I'm really keen on, is we do not have health education in the elementary school. There is not. There's not an official health education, so we really would like to see that happen. So that's in the red. And family engagement and community involvement is in the red there. And it is almost exactly the same at McCullough and also at Pinecrest. So we've identified some, we've got some really great strengths going on, and that's nutrition services. We have great employee wellness and health promotion. The social and emotional climate is good, and the physical environment is good, especially at the middle school and the high school. Room for growth, family engagement, community involvement, and health education in the elementary. So back to the report here. So here is the recommendations from the committee that we've got these great, we have a lot of really great physical activity opportunities for our students. We're really, really, really strong on that. And I think most kids feel pretty safe in school, and I think we've got some really great healthy foods being served at lunch. Where we have room for improvement would be having more family involvement, doing more with community outreach, which I think we're in the works for right now. There's some really great opportunities coming up here for us. Looking at health curriculum for the elementary schools. And middle school students actually identified they wanted to be able to move more in school. They wanted to have more chances for recess. They wanted to be able to move during class, going outside. That was listed a lot of times for middle school students, which I thought was something I wanted to make sure I brought up. So our goals for this next year, I have been in conversation with, blanking out Jen's name, Jen, for elementary health curriculum, and that's something we're going to be exploring. We will be continuing the parent newsletters. We will be looking at ways to support the emotional and social status and well-being of the students and work with the school district on community outreach, and we will also be looking at ship grants. So if anybody has ideas, what we really would like to do is partner with teachers. And so if any teachers have ideas or thoughts of things they'd like to do, come talk to me or somebody that's on the committee about your ideas, and we would love to partner with you about that. So are there any questions?
Mary Ellen, what do you mean by family involvement? What are some examples?
You know, so the reason why this link right, do you see where I'm pointing right here, here, and here? This is where, this is like 250 pages of details about the thing, so you can go on that and find out exactly what those questions are. The community outreach page is 194 or 195 on the elementary and page 200 for the community. I don't know what the page is for the family involvement, but you can go and look exactly and see what the questions are.
So it breaks down the questions?
It breaks down the questions.
Various categories, so you can say?
Yeah.
Question 37, you know, here they are.
Right. And I also think, because remember I said it was one individual answering the question? I think that there's potential that there could be things that we already are doing, but maybe that person didn't, wasn't aware of it as well, so that could, which also would be a perception issue that we have in our community, that maybe we actually are doing more outreach than we're actually even aware of. So. So thank you for your support of our students' wellness, and it's so important, and thank you for being on the school board. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen talked about that we had a few snow days, a record-setting year. So we've been following legislation. Legislation said that we can, as a school district, opt. We don't have to add back days, even though they know that we can't add them back. They gave us that freedom to do so. You can see the different closings that we had. We had E. coli at JFK Elementary. We had our middle school where we shut them down a day early because of all the construction. So at all of our sites, we've had different days. You can also read the law on number of hours, number of days, calendar year, et cetera. And so MDE said that there is no template of to make a motion or what you have to do. So they suggested that we just talk about it at the board meeting tonight. And if we wanted to add back a day, it wouldn't be like we're adding back a school day because school's already out. If we would choose to do that, we would just have to make sure that all of our employees were paid on that day, all of our subs were paid on that day. Now, we did pay for all of our employees on all the school days. We actually had that in our contract this year. And then anybody that you subcontract with, which would be the Hastings Bus Company, if you paid them on that day, you would have to make sure that they paid their employees on that day. There is no financial penalty for a school district on if you don't add back the days. We've always been short on our high school seniors, always. And as you read the law, it's in grades one through 11 for number of days. It doesn't, there's not a set number of days for seniors, however, there are a set number of hours. But because we, as a district, always have seniors not reporting on the first day of school, and then we always let them out four days early, and then if there's any snow days, we've always been short. Where you lose a little bit of money, and it's a very, very small amount of money, is in your ALC programs or your catch-up hours for some of your seniors and juniors. So it'd be one day, maybe even ALC student. It definitely would not be worth us saying that we're going to add back the day. So I think, as we have in past years, we come to the board meeting tonight, we acknowledge, A, that this was one heck of a weird weather year, and that we were happy with the amount of days that we added back. We made that choice actually two to three months ago on, as you can see, the days that we did add back. So with that, by just talking about it and Deanna including it in our minutes, MDE said that we've met the requirements then. So are there any questions on that? And then, of course, next year, we're gearing up for e-learning, and you'll hear more about that in August. And so we, a school district can have up to five e-learning days. So if there'd be five either cold or snow days, they would still count as student contact days. So I'm guessing that we're going to be pretty good from this point forward. The number of days, nine days, I think in my 16 years of being here, the highest ever prior to that was four. So it's definitely anomaly, and now with the e-learning days, I think that we're going to be fine, and you'll hear more about that in August. Okay?
So the real choice at hand is, we already paid our staff.
Yep.
We made the payments, we're due the bus company and the contract.
Yep.
Which is, we still pay them on snow days.
Yep, 50% on, yep.
50% on snow days.
Yep.
But we wouldn't anticipate. So it's sort of a bureaucratic process at this point if we wanted to add it back.
Right. Yep.
Nobody not getting?
Correct. Financially.
Financially harmed.
Right.
No, maybe a nominal number of students in ALC.
Right. And we've always, and we've always lost that small amount of money because we do have our seniors coming in, what, five less days?
Yeah, five less days.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. Wasn't underneath the superintendent's report, but I just, I was meeting with the facility committee. For all board members, if you want to do a walkthrough of the middle school, just email Joe Haas. His schedule is, you know, intermittent depending on what's going on this summer. But to do a walkthrough, you need to wear tennis shoes. Probably should have pants on, you don't have to. But just let him know in advance, you'll get to wear the hard hat and the safety glasses. But a lot of destruction that's taking place right now, mainly in our shower locker room area. And you can start seeing the HVAC work that's being done in the gymnasium where they're cutting all the HVAC work out. Definitely at our July or August workshop, we'll take a tour together to look at it. The middle school right now, we're anticipating our most change orders has been light because we're only into probably 10% of the project, and so I walked through just a few of those with the facility committee to update them. We'll approve them at our next board meeting, so I'll go through those with you in more in-depth at our next board meeting. The Todd Field change orders, I'd say Todd Field right now is about 65% completed. As you drive by, of course, the field looks like it's pretty well completed, but there's some.
It's green.
Yeah. There's some stitching that needs to be done.
Except for it's blue.
And a lot of the infill that needs to take place at Todd Field. And then, of course, they're working on the concession stand and the ticket area, and they're guessing by about July 4th, that'll be pretty well on the outside constructed, and then the parking lot after that. And again, the change orders that will be coming in July, there were two big issues. One was the center track that used to be there. They did not know how much of that was left, and so they weren't able to anticipate that. It was about $33,000 to bring that to a landfill. Then a second big one that our facility committee had already talked about was, on the south wall, the contractor felt in order to have soccer played at Todd Field, he felt that the south wall should be brought back a little bit further, and that was a $29,000 change order. And then, of course, we all know that the Todd Field wall from yesterday, we knew that there was, the sidewalk up above, there was a sinkhole. And when they came in, there was a post that they're going to put down on the base for the cameras, and when they went to put that in, and their boom truck put down their long extension arms, it caved in the sinkhole. So now, Mendat and us, we co-own that wall together. So we're still waiting for the Mendat engineers to come, and we're hoping that it doesn't rain three to four inches because that sinkhole, as the water goes down in there, it could come into the wall area. But we knew when we designed Todd Field that it was going to be far enough away from that wall. We had talked with Mendat about their plans to redo 61 in the next five to 10 years. They told us that there was going to be no plan to widen it because they really can't. And so we knew that Todd Field itself was always going to be safe, even if they had to do the wall. Of course, the expense of the wall was going to come at some point in time. Of course, we were hoping that it would come five years from now, and it all depends on what they decide to do at this time, too. So Mendat has been contacted. Russ came up with a great idea to also send out an email to Carla and Tony. We'll do that when we know a little bit more of what is going on. Another change order that's coming at Todd Field that's going to, could potentially be big is that the power that went to the lights, the poles, it was in what was legal back then, according to OSHA, the steel conduit, it needs, you know, be plastic PVC, so they had to replace all that. So Wald is arguing a little bit with the contractor on, you know, what is a fair price, which is typical in these change order situations. So middle school, I'd say right now is at about 5% to 10%. Todd Field's at about 65%. The tilden roof and windows, we're going to look to start going on that this fall. Parking lot at the high school, Athletica Complex, that comes next summer. And then we do have some elementary deferred maintenance. Joe had asked a good question at our facility committee about how many of the contracts have been awarded on the project, specifically the middle school. This is what Joe does for his livelihood, so he understands this. And right now, we're probably at about 70% of the contracts being awarded. Todd Field is still under bid specs. A lot of it's because of the $400,000 to $500,000 infill that we chose not to go with. The middle school is tight, and we knew it was going to be tight, so there still is some contingency there. So overall, that was the quick revision of the update that I had with the facility committee members. So, overall, that was the quick revision of the update that I had with the facility committee members before we joined you. I also sent, I met with Wald today, and I also sent them an email and a follow-up that we do have some cracking at our high school parking lot, and I want that, I want a second opinion. I want somebody else to come in and tell us why after one year that's cracking. I don't want to rely, rely on AJA and the contracting firm. So, we'll be getting another person out there to look at the, look at the high school. So, that was a quick update of the facilities. I'll give you a more in-depth tour of the middle school, you know, later on.
Is the, is the wall on the, is that kind of deemed safe?
Well, that's where, I mean, they've, they've cloned it off, and that's where...
The sidewalk is cool.
Dave was there yesterday when I was down there.
The DOT guys were there this afternoon. I didn't get a chance to talk to them, but they were there. Somewhere between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock this afternoon, evaluating, they didn't, unless they contacted you.
No, and we sent an email to the head person from MDOT, Molly, who's been on this project for the last two to three years, telling her, we need you to come down and look at this. We think it could be serious. So, we've had, we've reached out on all those connections. If we get a lot of rain, yeah, there could be a situation there, so. What else did I have? Oh, I just, we did remove an item from the agenda tonight, and so, it is now an appropriate time for me to talk about that.
I think so.
At our last board meeting, I announced that it was my intent to retire and keep working for the Hastings School District or as a superintendent elsewhere. I knew that this decision would save the school district potentially up to $25,000 annually, and it would be a financial benefit to me as well as I could access my retirement benefits. As I stated in that announcement at our last board meeting, I'm 56 years old, and my main intent is to keep working as a superintendent. I worked really hard and dedicated myself to this district for the past 16 years, and I plan on continuing to work that hard for the district and the students. The Hastings School District, as many of you know, was in statutory operating depth when I did arrive through my leadership, but with the work with school board members and community members and so many other people who believed in the path that we needed to take. We now have a $13.5 million fund balance. We now have 360 social workers that we didn't have back then. We now have Canvas mental health workers. We have more teachers in the classroom in 2019 than we had in 2003, and we have 800 less students. Technology integrationist, full-time director of teaching and learning, the list goes on. This all occurs with the hiring of outstanding staff members who provide the creativity, and they provide the new vision for the district year after year, and the energy enthusiasm that it takes to turn that creativity into reality. As superintendent, I need to make sure that we're financially in a position where those staff members can have that creativity to come to fruition. I've decided to withdraw my letter and keep working for the Hastings School District, and I will access those benefits that are mine several years from now.
Thanks, Tim.
Action items. Long-term facility maintenance revenue plan. Jen does all the work on that. Jen does the work with Jim Hubert on that. It gets submitted to the Commissioner of Education. So, I don't know if you want to take a motion and a, and then I'll explain more about it.
Yep, then we can get into the discussion. So, I'd like a motion to approve the ISD 210-year long-term facility maintenance revenue plan, which will be submitted to the Minnesota Commissioner of Education.
So moved, second.
Thank you, and we'll open it up for discussion at this time. Why don't we pause for a minute? If we're going to have people exit the room, why don't we go ahead and do that now? Say, Dean? I'm going to, I'll talk to you about the lunch.
Okay.
I'll reach out. All right. Okay, so, we were on action item number one. We had a motion, we had a second. It's open for discussion.
This was, this is relatively new for, for board members. So, even for myself and Jen, it's, I think, the long-term facility revenue's been around for 10 years. What's happened because of the bond is we've been able to really, you know, not have to rely on the plan that much. I do believe that in the year 2022 or about in that timeframe, that that's where then the facility committee will have to get more in-depth with this plan, which will be about perfect because that's when we're going to be done with our bond dollars. So, for right now, we're very light on the plan in the beginning years, heavier on the plan in later years. So, it doesn't change a lot year after year because we just move and roll those things forward. So, I'd recommend approval.
Any other discussion on that item?
So, does a 10-year start when the bond has to be spent?
Nope, we're already in it.
We're already in it.
It's a rolling 10-years.
Yep.
Is that right, Jen, it's a rolling 10-years?
Yep, and we don't, we don't have a lot on it right now because the bond is taking care of some of those heavy items. I think the next heaviest item's coming about the year 2022, which is perfect.
Yeah, it looks like it jumped about 150 on here.
Which is perfect timing for us.
And it, my understanding is, you know, it's a 10-year plan. It's a sense of this is what's coming, and we should be ready, and we know that this is an item that gets replaced every so often. Certainly open to, you know, if safety grants become available or whatever, we're going to go after those in a, in a aggressive way.
Some of those things that we didn't get on the original bond, that we could bring them forward.
Right, mhm, yep.
Any other discussion on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes. Action item number two, a motion to approve the contract with Sternow and Associates for the Student Family Assistance Program for the 2019-2020 school year. I would like a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. We'll open it up for discussion.
Renee's fabulous. He's been with the district for many years, and he's providing a contract, again, at 0% increase. I can't say enough, you know, when I first came here, I, this was a concept that is not in every school district and community. And I asked many questions about it because it was new to me, but very, very beneficial. And again, thank you to Renee for keeping the costs. I think this might be the third or fourth year in a row that he's not had any increase whatsoever.
This is so important for our schools. Yeah, it is. We're very, very lucky to have a partner in Sternow and Associates.
Does he keep, does he, does he keep up with our needs? I mean, in the past, we've had some discussion about...
Um, I, I think, I think if I understand it correctly, I think they are like a first point of contact for our students, and then they refer out. So, this isn't something where, where they're seeing a given student 30 times. This is something where they're seeing a student a handful of times.
Three times, three times is the most that they can typically be involved at the beginning.
But they're, but they're accessible. They're right there, which is half of it.
And then, we've brought in, then we've brought in the Canvas mental health caseworkers, too, that that takes on a caseload as well.
Other discussion, other than a big thank you? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes. Action item number three, I would like a motion to approve payment of $5,000 professional goals incentive to the superintendent per Article 9, Section 1 of the 2018 through 2021 superintendent contract. I need a motion and a second, please. Thank you, and at this time, I think we'll open it up for discussion. So, just the, the superintendent goals are derived by the entire board. The superintendent goals are reviewed by the administrative committee, on which it is myself and Joe Becker and Russ Roloff. So, we will bring forth our recommendation to the full board for a vote. So, I think Russ and Joe are going to go through, not only the goals, but some of the highlights under each one.
Okay, we had, we, it's usually four to five goals for Tim. This year was four. One of them was literacy focus at the elementary schools. And it started last fall when we went into a classroom at McCall, and to, to see the effort putting forth with the reading program, trying to get kids reading at their own level, more interesting books that they may want, putting more time towards the school. There was meetings with the principals, Jen and Mary. There's, there's money secured for this effort. Let's see, and there's training involved. So, that, you know, something like that, we aren't going to see an, an impact right away. That's a three, four-year program, so you're, we're not going to see a quick impact. Succession planning at our district office. Tim has been working with some of the people here for, for just retirement or replacing. Michael Manning was brought into district office for food service. Kim Fry retired, and Jen Seubert was brought in. I know he spent a lot of time with both of them, making that a transition. Andrea Sileski was kind of brought in to help with Jim Hubert, to be an assistant to him. And I know we've been talking to Jim a lot about, I mean, Tim about Jim and what's his idea for retirement because he's a key figure for our district. He knows all the schools very well. Middle school bond project, that's in itself, me personally, that's a big deal. We started nine months ago. We got it approved at the election in the fall, and within nine months, Tim just kind of went over all what's been going on. And Tim's a project manager for the school district. I know the architect helps out, but he's managing the project, and this is above and beyond his, his duties of a superintendent. And then, the last one was achievement integration. Once again, this is something that you just can't see an impact, but a lot had to do with the Avid program rolled out this year. And, you know, I called some teachers, and it's very well-received, and it's going to, it's going to have a bright future for us. Along with achievement integration, Tim attended seminars about equity and diversity training, and he met with the Minnesota Department of Education about donations for our programs. So, I think we, we agreed as a committee that Tim's met these specific goals and should be compensated.
Any comments?
I might have said everything, Russ, I'm sorry.
He said everything. I keep losing my voice, that, that day has gone on, so, but anyways. Yeah, he said everything that, before that we came up with last, last summer, I guess. He's completed, and I look forward to having it passed tonight.
Okay, just a couple of notes that I took. Going to the literacy focus at our elementary schools, the focus here was, you, you went through some of the actions that were taking place, but we really built that connection between the individual readers, the community, and the board. When we went there, the kids were reading for us, et cetera. The securing the money to purchase books at our elementary sites, I think it's important to note that those were via grants that were written to secure that money. The succession planning for our district office, I know you touched on Michael Manning, but we had, and Jen Seubert and Kim Fry, we had multiple movements and retirements within the district office that, and some shifting of job duties between individuals. And that was a lot of movement for a very small group. So, and to keep everything flowing was a big, was a big deal. So, those were just some notes that I had taken that I don't, I didn't think you touched on.
Well, my comment, and I, and I'll make it every year, is I've never wanted these goals in my contract. These are referred to as the Dan Grau goals. Because I then get evaluated publicly and no other employee does at this meeting. And Dan's belief was that every employee would have goals with compensation, and then everybody would get evaluated. But having said that, I also want to thank Dan Grau because for 10 years, I've met the goals that the board has put in front of me. And so, even though I've never wanted them in my contract, I guess on a night like tonight, to be able to say that I've met them year after year after year is pleasing to me as well. So, thank you for setting them together, going through the process. It kind of helps create our vision each year as a board, what you would like the focus to be on, along with all the other things that happen, too, so.
Any other questions or comments? I know, Joe, just to be clear, the subgroup, we are putting forth the recommendation that we do approve this. Any other questions, comments about this at this time? All right, we have a motion and a second. At this time, I'll be taking a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes. Action item number four, a motion to approve the second reading of the following policies. 406, the public and private personnel data. 418, the drug-free workplace in school. And policy 722, public data requests. I would also be in favor of an amendment to waive the reading of these policies.
So moved, second.
Thank you. Any discussion here? I know that we've gone through these in detail in our work sessions.
Not on these, but I know with the policy committee, I'm still, we are going to get together in July. The transportation policy is way more in-depth than what I anticipated. I've had to meet with elementary principals, I've had to meet with Terry. There's curriculum, there's who's going to be your transportation safety director. It's a lot more work than, than I thought at the beginning, but we will pull back together. I think there's that one, and there's the federal grants policy that we're looking at as well. So, we will pull together in July and finish those up as well. So, thank you to that committee for working on these as well.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve with the waiving of the reading, the second reading of the following, of the policies listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes. Action item number five, a motion to approve the acceptance of a gift from Apple for an estimated amount of $1,170 for the Apple Distinguished Educator Conference. Any a motion and a second, please?
So moved, second.
Thank you, and I'll open it up for discussion. Action items five and six are open, so I'll save my discussion for action item number six.
Yeah, this isn't a requirement from us, this is actually a requirement from Apple. Now, if I would be going to a conference that was donated where I have some power to make some decisions at that conference, then you'd have to accept it, or Jen Reichel, we've done that in the past. But for Andy, who doesn't necessarily have the power to make those decisions, but Apple said that anytime that they give a conference, they want the school board to know about it. And so, that's why we're doing it tonight.
And the dollars set forth were given by Apple for that?
Yeah, they're estimating, this is the airfare, this is the hotel, et cetera.
Is this a yearly thing from Apple or just...
No, it's a, it's an honor for Andy. They do the training at, at this, you know, conference, but...
Yeah, we've not had this come up before.
No, we've not had this.
I don't know if they do it annually. I presume they probably...
They probably do.
They probably do for the last several years at least.
So, that's the story on why it's on the agenda tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes. Action item number six, a motion to approve Andy Lizer to attend the Apple Distinguished Educator Conference on behalf of the school district. I'd like a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, I'll open it up for discussion, and...
I mean, congratulations to Andy for winning this award. How was he put up for it? Was he nominated by...
Yeah, I think Tim can talk about that a little bit. I think he is identified by Apple, so...
Yeah, he, because he's a distinguished educator by them and recognized by them, then they reach out to those individuals annually and say... um, then they reach out to those individuals annually and say, we'd like to bring you here for more training. Um, and so that's, they reached out and he said, well, yeah, I would like to, to go. It does fit my summer schedule. I believe it's in July. And so I said, absolutely.
Yeah, this is in, this is in recognition of his leadership that he puts forth in utilizing, in this case, Apple items, but for Andy, anybody who, who knows him, it's across the board. Some of the stuff that he is doing is very, very impressive in leading our elementary sky, uh, sites, our middle school sites in the integration of technology into their classroom. I, I think, I think you had mentioned, we're one of, one of the biggest, if not the biggest users of Seesaw. I, I mean, there's, there's various things here that we get really positive, uh, feedback from our parents about parents, grandparents, et cetera, that are linked into Seesaw, so. And anybody who knows Andy knows how energetic he is, especially when it comes to technology, so.
On all these snow days, we get to see him integrate his technologies to, into hourly reading events that you could choose to participate in.
Yeah.
And I must say, for anybody who loves the Echo, uh, at the high school and, and watching that video, is, uh, I think he only, I think it only happens weekly, but they do a video morning announcements.
Mm-hmm.
And it has little games in there and classes challenge each other and it's done at the elementary.
Yep.
It's just so, so seamless when the kids just glommed into it.
Where's he going?
Can't tell you a secret.
It actually is. We get to know the state, right, but not the city.
Yeah, I think it's Maryland, but, yeah.
Yeah, we're not being coy. It actually is a rule, so.
Yep. Now I know. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just that these Apple conferences are very well-known. We've had developers, previous jobs attend Apple conferences. And what they generally bring back from these conferences is significant to the organization. So I think this would be a great benefit.
It's good to hear.
Awesome. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Action item number seven, I would like a motion to approve a res- a resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities. Uh, do I need to read the entire, the entire piece here?
No, I don't think so. It's, um, this is now the new mandate that's coming out from MDE and the state of Minnesota on um, school districts taking over the extracurricular activities again. As you can see, it's, it was passed in special session.
Yeah, why don't I read it, at least, at least the first part here?
Okay.
No, it's not. So whereas Minnesota Session Laws twenty nineteen, First Special Session, Chapter eleven, Article one, Section five, will require changes in the accounting for student activity funds and school, and the school board must take charge of and control all student activities of the public schools in the district and that all money received or expended for extracurricular activities shall be recorded in the same manner as other revenues and expenditures of the district. Therefore, be it resolved that the haste, that the School Board of Hastings Public Schools Independent School District two hundred directs the district's administration to implement the requirements of Minnesota Session Laws twenty nineteen, First Special Session, Chapter eleven, Article one, Section five.
I just wanted to reiterate that, I know we said it once, but in non-political jargon again, that this is being done due to Minnesota statute.
Yeah.
You know, a decision that we're making.
Right. Other comments? Oh, I, I, we have not received a motion and a second, so. I need a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, this one actually goes for a roll call vote, so Russ?
Joe Becker?
Yes.
Peter Busenbach?
Yes.
Scott Kurgan?
Yes.
Ezeadeen?
Yes.
Dave Pemble?
Yes.
Russ Roloff?
Yes.
Kelsey Wade?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. This next one, I'm not going to read. So this is, uh, actually, yes, exactly, and I didn't bring my.
I brought my glasses.
I, I, if I had to read it, I certainly would. Okay, motion to approve a resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidates, candidacy. So the highlights in here are that, uh, the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the office of school board member of ISD two hundred shall begin on Jul- July thirtieth, twenty nineteen and shall close on August thirteen, twenty nineteen. An affidavit of candidacy must be filled in, in the office of the school district clerk and the two-dollar filing fee paid prior to five o'clock PM on August thirteen, twenty nineteen. So for the full resolu- the full resolution is in our board agenda for anyone who would like to read it. It's the same as it has been every year. Since I've been here, just change the dates. Still two dollars.
I was gonna say, this is much like the Ray Sternow.
Yeah, exactly. Keeping it flat. Okay, uh, so, I don't see a motion and a second here, but I think I need them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, may I have a motion and a second on this, please?
A motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And then this is a roll call vote.
Joe Becker?
Yes.
Peter Busenbach?
Yes.
Scott Kurgan?
Yes.
Ezeadeen?
Yes.
Dave Pemble?
Yes.
Russ Roloff?
Yes.
Kelsey Wade?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Action item, I thought that was not, no, that was eight. Action item number nine, a motion to approve a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of probationary teachers. Uh, we have, I believe, one probationary teacher in this, in this, uh, non-renewal. So again, for those of you viewing, the detailed information is online in our agenda. Any a motion and a second, please?
So move.
Thank you. Any discussion? Again, this is a roll call vote. Russ?
Joe Becker?
Yep.
Peter Busenbach?
Yes.
Scott Kurgan?
Yes.
Ezeadeen?
Yes.
Dave Pemble?
Yes.
Russ Roloff?
Yes.
Kelsey Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Action item number ten, a motion to approve changes to the pay equity review for the following. Number one, youth and development enrichment coordinator, change position title to enrichment and youth development coordinator with updated position description effective June first, twenty nineteen. No change in grade. Number two, adult enrichment, recreation and marketing coordinator. Uh, eliminate classification and corresponding position description effective June first, twenty nineteen. Number three, approve the classification and corresponding position description for the marketing specialist. Grade nine, effective June first, twenty nineteen. I'd like a motion and a second, then we'll open it up for discussion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. And we can have some discussion on this.
Really through Carrie Gore, um, and knowing what she wanted for services at community education. The timing of two people leaving their positions, one was retiring and one was, um, moving on to a different position in life. She then recreated these job descriptions for what she wanted to be at her site. And then, uh, of course, we send them off for the pay equity and the grading as well.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Action item number eleven, a motion, I would like a motion to approve the employee clas- classification review cycle for pay equity compliance for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, there are seventeen different employee classifications. I'll just run through them quickly. Ground supervisor, lead custodian, maintenance specialist, grounds worker, CE center, custodian, custodian, cleaner, lead cook two, lead cook one, cook, cook's assistant, RN, LPN, ECP coordinator, adults with disability coordinator, SAC program coordinator and senior citizen coordinator. Like a motion and a second, then we can have some discussion.
So.
Thank you.
Well, most of you don't know this, but this was a really big issue for the district. There was not a pay equity and compliance review when I first came here. And to get all these positions categorized caused a lot of pain. Because people then, you send it off and a person determines what your grade should be. And then I get to come back along with Kim Fry at that time and Jen maybe was involved in that and tell people that it's graded differently. Um, and I think that happened all around the year two thousand seven, somewhere in there. So now that we have the system, we said that we would never, ever get away from that system and that every year, we'd bring one-fourth of those positions to the board. Um, and letting people know that if they want to, if they believe their position would be graded differently, which is very difficult, once it gets graded, to be graded differently. Because if you're a custodian, it does not matter if you're doing more floors or more responsible. That way, your job is not going to get graded differently. It's, it takes quite a bit to get it graded differently. So tonight then, is us following through with one-fourth of all positions to the board. Um, saying that these are the ones that are up for review now.
Any further discussion?
What schools do we use? Do we do, have those already impacted?
No, that, yep, that's, we send them all to an outside firm, that they do this for, uh, a living. Um, and so let's say that, um, the adults with disability, um, coordinator would feel like their job was, had more added to it and/or more responsibility, or that it was graded incorrectly. They have to write down all the reasons why. Their supervisor has to either agree or disagree. And then we send it, we send it off. So that it's not Tim Collins deciding, it's not Jen deciding, it's not, it's an outside entity saying that this is how we believe it should be graded, cause that's what they, they deal with.
And we've gotten to a point now by doing this on a regular basis that uh, an individual employee would have to raise the question and say, I am in this category.
I've been wrongly placed.
And I'm not, and I'm not, yeah. And I should be placed somewhere else. Probably still in that category, but at a different grade level.
And then whenever we get new positions like we did earlier, or we're gonna be hiring an equity coordinator, you know, how is it determined what that equity coordinator, what grade should they be on? That's, the good news about it is Tim doesn't have to decide and Jen doesn't have to decide. Um, we send it out and say, here's the job description. And they compare it, like you said, Russ, to other markets, markets in the area. And that's how the system now rolls, year after year. And we keep it in compliance.
Okay.
Any other discussion before I open it up for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Action item number twelve, I would like a motion to approve the resignation of the following six people. And again, we typically do not read these. And for anyone who would like to see them, they're online in our agenda. But I need a motion and a second, please.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Besides, I thank you for their service. I know that at least one of them is taking a position in their hometown, so good for them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Action item number thirteen, I need a motion and a second to approve the leave of one person.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Action item number fourteen, I would like a motion to approve the employment of the following twelve individuals.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Besides a big welcome?
Mm-hmm.
Will these be the ones that, uh, fall, uh?
Yep, the welcome back.
Well, this plus, I think we had a, yeah, we had a whole, yeah, last time, I think we had a whole slug of them too.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be looking forward to that program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Uh, other business, uh, so in July, we do not have a regularly scheduled work session. We just have our uh, televised board meeting. So our televised board meeting is scheduled for July seventeen at six PM here in the district boardroom.
And we do have teacher negotiations from four o'clock till six o'clock that night as well.
Yep.
Peter. And then again, I, I know that in July, I'll be connecting with the policy committee, um, to pull together. And I know some of you go on vacation, so I'll get that email out. Joe gave me a great suggestion. He said I should really start using the calendar. Um, so I'll start doing that where once you accept it, it automatically goes into your calendar, so.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I mentioned I'm a stay-at-home parent and I detest online calendars. Don't come up with that.
As I can see by the, the little book you're carrying around.
All right, I'll send you a, I'll send, I'll send you a letter.
Team player. Thank you, Joe.
He'll scribble. He'll send you a scroll.
Yes, yes, I would like a scroll, an animal's been scrolled.
When, when your kids all use it, then you're forced to use it.
She lives on a whiteboard. All righty, fine.
All right. Uh, that brings us to the end of our agenda. At this point, I would like a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.